I call this meeting the North Adams City Council to order for March 27th. This meeting is being recorded. Will the clerk please take roll?
Bona?
Here.
Buddington?
Here.
Cohen?
Here.
Harpin?
Here.
Hopkins?
Here.
Lamb?
Here.
LaForest?
Here.
Moran? Wilkinson?
Here.
You have eight present. I need to move on.
And pledge?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, approval of minutes from March 13th.
Moved to approve.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? It's approved. All right, paper number 11,651, Communication from Council President Bona Regarding the City's Shooting Range. Going to get, uh, this was in City Council, February 13th, 2018, and voted to refer to Public Safety Committee and the Police Director. I'm going to guess there's going to be a motion to postpone, uh, but, to a date certain, but, uh, I guess, Counselor Lamb, do you want to give your report?
Uh, sure. So, uh, in brief, uh, what we ended up with is we had a really... Hold on. Peter, are the headphones out here?
I'm bringing them out now, Keith.
Okay. He's bringing them out. He's bringing them out. Okay. Should I wait, or? Uh, yeah, he was involved in the meeting, so... Yeah, yeah. We'll want to make sure he can hear.
You're late.
I know.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So, the, um, the Public Safety Committee did meet, um, and we had actually a really great conversation with a number of folks that, uh, arrived at that meeting. It was about an hour and a half that we met, and actually it was a lot of, uh, taking questions and thoughts and considerations from the folks in the room, and what we ended up doing was is we compiled, uh, quite a long list of everything that came up. That included some smaller stuff, but then also some bigger ideas, um, and we ended up forwarding that on to both the Mayor's Office, uh, and the Police Director, and we're waiting on responses, which it'll take some time, just based on the number of questions that there were. Uh, and our plan is, once we do have that information back in writing, we'll actually be holding another meeting to continue that discussion, to see where those pieces are, because some of them were, um, very logistically based questions, and some of them were more, um, long-term planning types of questions. But I'm not sure if the Mayor wants to speak at all to that, or if you want to wait until, uh, later time.
I'll just offer that, subsequent to receiving the questions, the Director and I have met, we've started to, uh, assemble responses and are putting together something, something in writing, and as soon as we're, you know, he and I have done one more pass on it, and I feel like we've, we've responded completely, we will forward it along.
Great. With that in mind, I don't know that it necessarily makes sense to put a date definite on the return for this, just because if we're going to be taking their comments and then having another meeting, I'm not sure when that will happen. Also based on the fact that Finance Committee is going to be beginning this coming month, which will take up, um, a good amount of time. So I'm not sure if we can say that it'll come back to this meeting, maybe in June, um, just so we can get through the, the finance piece, but I do think that we're at least going to have one more, if not multiple more, meetings to discuss the gun range specifically as public safety.
How about the last meeting of June?
Sure.
Okay. That works. Uh, so we will, um, I don't know if there is a, is the motion on the floor right now? You know, we just have the report. So we do have a motion to postpone to, um, what is the date of that meeting? Calendar? Well, just say the last meeting of June. Or, um...
So moved.
And, uh, so we need that motion.
So moved.
Right, second?
Second.
Lamb? Okay, so we sort of already did the committee report. Is there any other discussion? Yes, go ahead.
Oh, okay. I thought you were moving on to the next thing. Yeah. No, that, that was really the, the majority of it, um, from our end, anyway. But it was a great conversation with folks.
Any other discussion from counselors? Yes.
Just, um, were there any immediate safety issues that are being addressed that you guys saw? Or, okay, so it's just follow-up questions?
Nothing that really was a super red flag.
Okay.
There's things that, especially once we get to the warmer season, there might be some stuff that can be done even before we bring it back to council. There might be some steps made in certain ways, but, um, nothing of a life or death right now impacting, you know, um, people in that way.
Okay, thank you.
I think one of the things that came up was, which really wasn't a safety of the range, was just more the condition of the road, so a lot of people, at this point, can't even get up there that well, so. Any, uh, discussion from the audience on the, uh, shooting range meeting? The public safety meeting? No? Okay, not hearing any. Need a, uh, all, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? So, meeting, uh, motion is postponed. Second meeting of June. Paper number 11,646-A, An Ordinance Amending the Revised Ordinance, Chapter Z, by Adding a New Subsection, Section 10.12, Licensed Marijuana Establishments. This was in City Council, March 13th, 2018. Public hearing was held, voted to pass to a second reading and post as a municipal bulletin as required by law, as amended. We need a motion to adopt the ordinance.
Motion to adopt the ordinance as amended?
Second. And a second from Wilkinson.
Lamb, actually.
Lamb.
Oh, sorry. You two.
Sound alike.
Yeah, yeah. The, uh, discussion. Yes.
Um, well, we, we got a lengthy list of, of proposed changes, uh, from the Regional Planning Commission, which I presume we're going to discuss. I just want to make sure that's on the menu.
Any, well, yes, go ahead.
Well, I read them all over, and I'm, I can say that, uh, I'm thoroughly confused. So, um, I was hoping that somebody would either be here tonight to explain, uh, the difference of some of this stuff. I don't understand the difference of, of, uh, the technical medical marijuana versus retail. I know that there's changes. Uh, we did not address those in the original ordinance, and I didn't know if that was something that was particularly pressing or needs to be maybe amended at a later date. But, uh, is there somebody here that could probably explain, uh...
So, I mean, these, these are some options we, we do have with this, with those amendments. So we, we are, can approve what is, uh, currently in front of us, and, um, work on these amendments at a later date. Um, we can, uh, discuss these amendments tonight, which they're, they're fairly lengthy, um, and, which would sort of turn this meeting to a working meeting, uh, and either, at the end, you're approving them with or without, or it may get moved on. So, those are, uh, a couple of the options, um, you know, based off of last meeting. You know, I know my preference, but I, you know, if the counselors want to discuss it tonight, that's an option, otherwise it can be, um, approved with what's on the, uh, what we have worked on last week, and then we can come back to these amendments at a later date, so. Yes, Counselor Lamb?
Um, one thing that, and maybe the, the Mayor, and I'm sorry, I can't remember your name...
Chris Gruba.
Chris, um, might be able to answer, is, um, knowing that the, kind of the trigger date is April 1st for, um, applications for these permits to begin, I believe if we don't have ordinance in place, it, there's, there's nothing there in terms of a structure to handle those. And so my only concern with, so, and this is just my, my thinking, is I think maybe approving this as an ordinance as it is, so we have something on the books, and then beginning the process of either tonight or at another, you know, future meeting, a committee meeting, whatever, do the, um, the amendments, because I do believe that those are going to have significant conversation. And if we inserted those tonight, we would have to go back to a first reading, followed by a second reading, which pushes us into April for the actual approval of an ordinance, which leaves a, not to say that someone's going to take advantage of that gap, but it could be a challenge if something did come up and we didn't have something in place. So I'm just, in terms of that timeline, I know the Mayor was very strategic in trying to make sure that we had something in place before that, um, that beginning point with the state, um, and so I do wonder if it makes sense for us to approve as is and then do a process of amendment with all of those other edits. That's just a question slash thought that I wanted to put out there.
Uh, Counselor Wilkinson and Counselor LaForest.
Just out of curiosity, we had to publish this before, went to the second reading. If I could ask the clerk through the, the chair, what does it cost to publish?
That did not cost anything, because it was eight pages, so it went as a municipal bulletin.
Okay.
So there was no cost to that, uh, so...
I, again, I'd like to find out more about this, so I'm going to have to, uh, agree with Counselor Lamb that we should probably move this forward to, tonight, and it should go to committee, because there's going to be a lot of discussion if you have a chance to look at all this stuff, and we need to, uh, I don't think, it'll be a three-hour meeting tonight if we were, just on this topic, if we were to try to hammer this out.
Yes, Counselor LaForest.
So I'm going to agree also that, uh, you know, we move forward with adopting the ordinances as amended and refer those, uh, suggested amendments to committee, uh, because if we don't have ordinances in place by April 1st, uh, it's, that is correct, um, anyone applying at that point would essentially be grandfathered into a lack of local ordinances and be subjected only to the, um, you know, the guidelines of the CCC.
Any other discussion? Mayor? Did you, oh, sorry, Counselor?
Just quickly, um, I, because I, I had not gone to the meetings, uh, was there ever discussion about putting Verbagen about the medical use? Because I don't see that previously, and it seems as though they're just kind of saying, "Okay, well, now this needs to be in here." So there, there wasn't any discussion previous about that needing to be in there?
I have Counselor.
So I was just going to say that, you know, the working group and subsequently the Public Safety Committee did not discuss medical marijuana. The, the, you know, the work that we've done over the last 90 days or so has been specific to retail marijuana, uh, and retail marijuana establishments. And so, yes, these, not that they're inappropriate, um, or there's going to be much objection to their inclusion, you know, per se, but we have not discussed it.
Yes, Counselor Lamb?
And I just wanted to agree with Counselor LaForest. I think going into this, it was established as the retail cannabis, you know, uh, working group, um, so I think that the targeting was very focused in that way, knowing that currently the state already had medical marijuana, um, ordinance and laws put in place. So I, I think that this is, from what I glean, and I think this will come through more in conversation, is that it is more of a clarification point than anything. It's not necessarily changing the medical marijuana laws. It's really just making sure that there's clarification...
Separate, yes.
You know, splitting those things. But again, I, that wasn't something that we focused on in public safety, um, in the meetings that, you know, I attended, that we didn't discuss there, so.
Yes, Counselor LaForest.
There are a couple of important points, uh, in the recommendations of the planning board, and so I, I am grateful, you know, to, uh, Chris and the planning board for providing these, uh, but I don't think it's anything that should, uh, prevent us from passing the, you know, amended ordinance tonight.
Any other counselors for discussion? Mayor, did you have anything you wanted to say on that?
Uh, a couple really quick points. First, I want to thank the council for their forbearance with a, a project, a process which, uh, to Counselor Lamb's point, we tried to be as strategic as we possibly could to hit a particular date while the state process was itself unfolding. And so what we're, what we're finding is that the, the slight differences in intent and focus between the originally published and finally published state regs created a couple of these, a couple of these issues, including the, the issue around marijuana. So I apologize for the, for the confusion. Uh, I will offer that, at the request of the Council President, I did seek an opinion from the solicitor, who, whose recommendation was consistent with what you've, you've put forward, pass and amend as, you know, as, as has been put forward. And I would invite Chris up to talk about the, um, the medical issue and why that, why that's come up at this point, if you're, uh, if you're so inclined to have that put forward.
Uh, you know, well, those would be, I guess, my, my feeling is if the council at this point is looking to move forward with, without the amendments, that I think, um, anything specific to the amendments...
Fair enough.
Would be better discussed at the future meeting, when those amendments are being voted on. Otherwise, I think we're, we're talking about something that really isn't what is on our table at this point, unless someone makes, you know, a motion to make those amendments, so. Uh, but I think that would just complex. Make it more, yes.
Um, I, I agree with that, uh, to an extent, but I also want to make sure that we're able to capitalize on the fact that Chris is in the room, just in terms of an expert on the topic.
Sure.
And if it's more of just a clarification point, uh, to that specific piece, we're going to be the folks having those conversations at a later meeting anyway, when we do discuss them, so having that in our wheelhouse might not be, uh, a bad thing to hear.
My feeling with that, again, is the amendments are not actually being asked to be voted on. I guess we, guess we can discuss. I mean, I, you know, I'll hear from other counselors, but I think it could get confusing to be listening to something that doesn't pertain to specifically what we're voting tonight. You know, uh, otherwise it could, I mean, it could, and if that's what counselors wish, it could change, and people say, "Well, maybe we better put that in." But, you know, the sentiment I'm hearing right now is, go with what's in front of us, discuss those and work on those amendments later. And, you know, sort of a point of order is, um, those amendments are not currently what we're voting on. And they're not on the agenda. It's a length, you know, but I mean, they're not minor changes. It's a, you know...
Right, but we are discussing the ordinance around, and I, and I, you know, I'm good either way. As long as we can get Chris to those meetings in the future, I think that would be the big thing... To make sure that we can ensure that, if we're not going to discuss those pieces now.
Counselor Buddington?
Um, I, I support hearing from, from the, from Chris from Regional Planning tonight, simply because he is here, and it's, even though it's not exactly, and it's not an amendment we're considering, is very much on topic for this agenda item, um, and very relevant to our future discussions. I think it will save time in the long run, if we can take advantage of the fact that he came here, to get some context.
Yes, Counselor LaForest?
If we're going to refer this to coo, to committee and publish that the committee is going to discuss these ordinances, then I think it's only fair to our constituents that we allow them to be part of the conversation, uh, at the committee meeting. I, I feel badly that Mr. Gruba has, you know, carved time out this evening to, to be here for this purpose, but, um, it doesn't seem congruous to, you know, to have a discussion on something we're not voting on, that we're later going to have the public at, you know, that, they may have questions that they would like Mr. Gruba to answer at that time. So I...
My feeling, if there is a motion to amend, and then that gets a second, and then we discuss that, then we're in discussion of those amendments. But at this point, I feel those amendments are not part of our, our discussion of what we're voting on. And I, I mean, I, I do hope that that discussion obviously moves forward with a future public safety meeting, but I really feel it's out of place if we're not going to be considering those amendments tonight. It's, I just feel it's a pre, premature discussion. Um, I understand he's here, but, yes, Counselor LaForest?
I'm just going to caution going down the rabbit hall, rabbit hole with this, and forcing a rep publication of the ordinances, and therefore not having ordinances in place by April 1st. I, I, I don't know. I guess...
So, I, just to be clear...
Counselor Lamb and Counselor Wilkinson?
Just to be clear, I'm not talking about going through all of these amendments. I'm talk, we are having discussion about the ordinance that's before us, and if I were to pose the question right now, "Why aren't we including medical marijuana in there?", that could open up the door for this conversation, because we could, in theory, make amendments to this tonight. It would just have to be published, but just to have the conversation, and if everyone, you know, if it's just me and Counselor Buddington that are, are thinking this way, I'm fine pulling back, it's just, I, I don't like to waste folks' resources by having them come and then not actually tapping into the conversation, even if we're not actually including the amendments. The other thing that I would also say is, it's great to have this go to public safety, but I do believe that this is very much so a full council discussion when we do these amendments, so it actually poses that if we do a public safety, that we try to make sure that all counselors can be there to have that conversation, because I know, scheduling-wise, it's been tough to get everyone, uh, in one place, and this is a very large topic for the community, so I just, I, you know, in terms of those pieces.
Counselor Wilkinson?
Can I make a motion to move the question? I second the motion.
Okay. Do a roll call on that?
Yeah.
Let's do a roll call. So moving the question basically ends it there, and we go to vote. So, roll call. At this point, we have not had, um, public discussion, though.
Okay, so this is to move the question?
Yes.
Buddington?
No.
Cohen?
No.
Harpin?
No.
Hopkins?
No.
Lamb?
No.
LaForest?
Yes.
Wilkinson?
Yes.
Bona?
No.
So discussion continues. I, you know, my vote on that was simply because no one in the audience has had the opportunity to speak on the motion in general, that is in front of us, which is the whole motion, so. Yes, Counselor Cohen?
Um, I support to, to at least listen, and with the knowledge that, you know, if there is further discussion that's needed, that Mr. Gruba is also going to be present for other meetings as well, um, but he did take his time to come, so.
Yes, uh, Counselor Harpin and Counselor LaForest?
Yes, I, I support it as well. Um, I think the resources are here, and it would be great to hear from some resources, because I am confused about this as well, so, um, a good, basic overview wouldn't hurt anybody, and it certainly wouldn't hurt the public as well, if they would like to join the conversation when we have it. They would have some, some good overall, basic understanding of, of what the next discussion will be. So I, I would support hearing from him.
Yes, Counselor LaForest?
So I just want to make sure that we are not in violation of the open meeting law by pulling these forward and discussing them, and since it's not on the agenda, as the city clerk has pointed out, and also I want to, um, be certain of the process before we begin, so that we're not quagmired the way we were at the last council meeting. So, does a counselor need to call forth each of these amendments for discussion, or are we simply giving the floor to Mr. Gruba so that he can explain what's contained in the, in the language?
Your second option there, so I do not believe we're going over each amendment. We're just going to, uh, give some time, so, uh, to, I don't know, do you want to ask a specific, so it looks like the council is okay with discussing some of these amendments. Is there a specific question, Counselor Lamb, you'd like to have answered, instead of the whole amendments, or...
Um, for me, it's actually just going back to the original question that started this, which was asking specifically about the differentiation piece with the medical marijuana and the retail marijuana, um, before we go to future meetings, so...
If you'd like to get up and speak to that, and name an address for the record, and, again, sort of specific to what is being...
Right, okay, well, um, thank you. My name is Chris Gruba. I work for the Berkshire Regional Planning Commission, uh, One Fenn Street, Pittsfield, Massachusetts, um, unless you need my home address. Okay. At any rate, um, I will be brief about this, because it is easy to go down a rabbit hole with this. And, uh, Mr. Lamb, your question was, how did the medical get involved at this point?
Yeah.
Okay, so, there, um, up until now, we have been looking at the recreational marijuana, the adult-use marijuana that has just been finalized in, in early March. There was also the medical marijuana, which was approved back in 2012. That was from a while ago. Nobody had really been paying any attention to that. It was kind of thought that medical was going to be going away, because who would, who would open up a medical business that could sell only to people that had a prescription, if all you had to need, all you needed was a driver's license? So that medical portion was thought to be going away, and there's sort of this ambiguity whether it will be or not. The point of bringing it into this, at this point of the game, is that I was concerned that, um...
Excuse me, can you just get closer to the mic?
I'm sorry about that.
Because for the people at home, they...
Yep.
Can't hear you if you're too far.
Sure, sorry about that. I didn't want to deafen anybody. So, if we're all talking about marijuana, there's a lot of, there's the, um, the assumption that the city would then be covered for all kinds of marijuana, and I would hate for the, um, the situation to happen where the city was, we had this recreational adult-use marijuana ordinance in place that's airtight, and then somebody approaches the city to do a medical facility, and we, we don't, we don't even address that. So I, you know, it was, it was a dawning at the last minute, and I apologize that it was last minute, but I felt that, you know, if there's a loophole and something like that would have happened, it would have, it would have been not so great. So the, excuse me, the recreational part, the adult use, is, I, I, I'm very comfortable with it, but, um, yes, adding the medical portion, I, I don't think is, uh, it changes the essence of it, other than addressing older law, but, you know, it, um, if, if more time is needed to study it, that I understand. I just didn't want to drop the ball, and, you know, that, that the city would be exposed for medical. So, sorry, this is long-winded.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, Counselor LaForest?
I just, you apologize, and I, please don't misunderstand the parliamentary procedure that Counselor Wilkinson and I were, were moving, uh, because you have been extremely helpful to us in the working group and the council also, and I understand that, you know, the, the burden of working through all of these regulations, uh, that only came out March 5th or 6th, um, you know, it is, is not, you know, an easy one, and so, you know, please, please don't apologize. We are very grateful for the work that you've done in assisting us through this process.
Yep, not, not a problem.
Other counselors? Anyone else in the audience? Yes? Name and record, uh, name and address for the record, please.
Robert Cardamino, on 72-3, Quincy Street. I don't know if this is the proper time, or whatever, but, uh, not knowing what the side effects from marijuana, I got on a computer, and, uh, a lot of the colleges and universities across this country are studying it, and all the side effects are inconclusive. They're saying perhaps, maybe, they're not, because they haven't had time to study it over a longer period of time. But the one thing that they do agree on is the, uh, impairment of marijuana when you're driving, and the police have no way to check that. It ain't like you blowing a tube, or, you know, for alcohol, and things like that. The police don't have any way annoying that. And, uh, they're, and they, they all agree that marijuana does impair your driving, and they say the accident rate is going to skyrocket. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the audience? Any other counselors? So we have a, uh, motion to adopt this ordinance. This is a roll call vote.
Buddington?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Harpin?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
LaForest?
Yes.
Wilkinson?
Yes.
Bona?
Yes.
You have eight ayes. Motion carries.
Motion carries. Paper number 11,393-9A, Recommendation of the Public Safety Committee Regarding Public Consumption of Marijuana and Marijuana Products. Motion to accept the committee report?
Motion to accept.
Second.
Owen and Harpin? Uh, and discussion from council. Uh, you want to read your report?
Uh, sure. So, um, I'll just read this for the record. "The Public Safety Committee of the North Adams City Council voted unanimously on Monday, March 19th, and recommends that below-city ordinance edits for consideration, and voted to refer both ordinance edits to the Public Safety Director and City Solicitor for final review." Um, so these were the two, uh, ordinance that came before council, um, that got referred over to us at the last meeting. Um, the first one is Chapter 14, Section 14-3.2, Public Consumption of Marijuana and Marijuana Products. Section A, No Public Consumption. "In accordance with General Laws, Chapter 94G, Section 13C, no person shall smoke, ingest, or otherwise use or consume marijuana or marijuana products, as defined in General Laws, Chapter 94G, Section 1, while on, in, or upon any public way, public place to which the public has a right of access, where smoking tobacco is prohibited, or private lands without the consent of the owner or person in control thereof. And, also, section, or, Chapter 29, Section 29-2D, Public Consumption of Marijuana and and Marijuana Products, Chapter 14, Section 14-3.2, fines, first offense $50, subsequent offense, or offenses $100, with the enforcing persons being police officers. We did have, so, of those two, the Chapter 29, we actually made no edits to, based on what was originally received by council at the last meeting, but for Chapter 14, there were significant changes in there, in terms of the language use. And the majority of that came through in the conversation based on, actually, Counselor LaForest was really able to give us a lot of detail of other pieces of the ordinance that already basically cover components here. And then Counselor Buddington also helped to provide some information about our current alcohol ordinance as it stands, and this language was basically derived by trying to be in alignment with our alcohol laws and ordinance, while also accounting for the fact that this is a substance that, if you're smoking it and it, it's in the air, it can affect others. So, subsequently, we included the smoking of tobacco as a, kind of a defining characteristic of where you can't do these things as well. After we sent this in and we got feedback, we do have written feedback from Director Casalio, and I know that the city solicitor is here as well, but the major pieces that Director Casalio mentioned was, is he suggested removal of smoking tobacco to using, or where tobacco consumption is prohibited, rather than it being smoking, which would account, and that was part of our conversation, too, which would account for chew and things of that type. But that was the major edit that he suggested. So, that was what came out of committee.
Any other discussion? Any discussion from the audience? Yes.
Robert Cardamino, 173 Quincy Street. And you're absolutely right. The smoking of marijuana, secondhand smoke is just as harmful and maybe worse than tobacco. And what there's, this, that was a separate study that I picked up, and I have it printed at home, but anyway, it says that there should be some places that are smoke-free. You know, you couldn't get on a bus and start smoking marijuana, because it's harmful to somebody else that doesn't smoke, you know, and it can cause lung cancer. It's just as harmful as tobacco. And even out in the public, like you're on a street, or you're on a corner, and there's, having dinner on a sidewalk, and somebody lights up some marijuana, it could spread to the people around you. There's got to be some smoke-free areas, and some, some kind of regulation to prevent this, because it's a health hazard to everybody that's, that doesn't smoke. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone from the public? Any other counselors? This is at the moment, we are just discussing accepting the committee report, so we'll actually be going to the motion after this. So, you can discuss now, but.
No, I'll wait.
All right. All right, so, right now, all in favor accepting the committee report?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, so now we are on to the actual ordinance. Paper number 10,393-9, An Ordinance Amending Chapter 29, Non-Criminal Deposition, Severability of the Revised Ordinance of the City of North Adams by Adding the New Section 29-2, Public Consumption of Marijuana and Marijuana Products. And this was in city council, March 13, 2018, voted to refer to public safety and postpone. So, I need a motion to pass to a second reading and published as required by law.
So, moved?
Second.
And discussion from council. Yes, Counselor Lamb?
I, so, I, we do have the information from Director Casalio, which suggests an edit or an amendment to it, but I would also like to hear from the city solicitor to see if there's any other suggestions that he might have, just since we don't have something in writing here.
So, do you want the city solicitor opinion?
Yes.
City solicitor, come up.
Yes, I'd be happy to provide that.
To the, to the microphone, please.
Counselor, I'd be happy to provide that to you. As I understand what you're doing this evening is passing it to a second reading, and I'll, I'll send a communication to you with my thoughts.
So, knowing the one suggested amendment, before we do pass to a second reading and publish as required by law, I'd like to make a motion to change the language from, the amendment is to chapter.
It's the other one.
29.
The amendment is to the other chapter. It's the next.
I would rescind making that motion at all.
Okay. Motion rescinded.
Does he still want an opinion?
So, do you still want to?
We, so, we requested a response from the solicitor for both of these when we originally voted as a committee, and so, we're just waiting on that.
Okay. All right. Any other discussion from counselors on this paper? Anyone from the public? So, right now, I need, let's see. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Paper number 11,014-2, An Ordinance Amending Chapter 14, Entitled Offenses, Miscellaneous Section, what is it? Sorry, I got a, I got a hole. Section, Section 3 of the Revised Ordinance of the City of North Adams, by adding a new section, 14-3.2, Public Consumption of Marijuana or Marijuana Products. So, let's see, this was inside the city council, March 13, 2018, voted to refer to public safety and postpone. Motion to pass to a second reading and publish as required by law.
So, moved?
Second.
Count Buddington and Hopkins. And discussion from council on this. Yes, Counselor Lamb and then Buddington. Yes.
So, surprise, I would like to make a motion to amend the language from saying where smoking tobacco is prohibited, to saying where tobacco consumption is prohibited.
Got this right here. Yep.
Second.
And do we have discussion on the amendment? Yes, Counselor Harpen?
Yeah, I would just like to put an "and" in there instead, because most people do know the word "smoking tobacco" instead of "consuming," so maybe if we could put "smoking", "consuming," or "chewing," it's kind of a little more descriptive. I mean, most people, when they hear "consuming tobacco," I guess they would know what is "smoking," but I mean, when you see signs all over the place that it says "no smoking," so, I mean, it just seems to be a more accepted version, and more people know about smoking than consuming tobacco.
Yes, Counselor Buddington.
I just want to be clear. Are we, have we officially accepted the amendments proposed by the committee? Are we working off of that? Or do we, do we need to accept the recommendations of the committee as an amendment?
We accepted the committee report.
Okay.
And now we're accepting the actual new ordinance language that we.
Okay, so, so we're working off of the, the language as proposed.
There was two motions following the committee report.
Thank you. If I may comment on that, then.
Okay.
I have a little concern with the language that the police, that the Public Safety Director proposed, because if it says where tobacco consumption is prohibited, that could be read to mean if, where any one kind is prohibited, or where all kinds are prohibited, and I think that leaves a lot of gray area. For, for instance, what if there's an area where, where chewing tobacco is prohibited, but smoking is allowed? Does that count as an area where tobacco consumption is prohibited, or not? And so, if we, if we do adopt this language, I'd like it to be specific enough to either say where any tobacco consumption is, or where any sort of tobacco consumption is prohibited. So, there's no confusion, if that helps.
Are we, just to be clear, I have here the taped amendment from the, I'm guessing from the.
The taped amendment?
You, well, I taped it in.
Oh.
Yeah, yeah, go ahead.
In your report, you give, and I'm assuming this is a suggestion for 14, that piece that you're putting in, is that?
The full.
This whole piece right here?
Mm-hmm.
So, you want to substitute it?
Oh, so, the amendment would act.
Where you're putting all this.
Okay, so, there was, what the, what we received from the mayor's office was.
The actual document.
So, that's the actual, so, this was the language that we, in the Public Safety Committee, we took that and refashioned it to this, so that it's actually a full, so, should I?
So, are you actually taking this out of the regular document and putting this in?
It's a full replacement. It's a full replace, it's a full replacement. So, should I?
No, that's fine, as long as I know, so when I publish it, we get the right thing published.
Got you, okay. Thank you.
Go ahead, Counselor.
Oh, man, now I'm gonna lose it. So, because there are many ways to utilize tobacco, I'm wondering if something along, more along the lines of, you know, I, I agree, maybe the smoking or consumption, so including both words in there, because I do think, you know, that the chew is, we're treating it the same, so it's, you know, because marijuana also has multiple forms, too, right? So, you have edibles, you have smoking, you have vaping, all of that. And so, aligning it very clearly with all uses of tobacco may make the most sense. Because consumption, people might just be thinking of eating. I do get that, like that, that does make sense.
Counselor Buddington.
As I recall, a lot of the committee discussion referred to sections of mass general law that specifically addressed smoking of tobacco, and I'm hoping that Counselor LaForest can clarify a little, well, you were, you were very aware of those sections of state law, I think.
Well, well, they were in front of me during the committee meeting. I don't have them with me now. So, so what is the, the question? What are you looking to, for?
Well, it, it seems to me that the language proposed by the committee referred to smoking tobacco specifically because that is covered in exactly those terms of smoking tobacco in mass general law. And so, we were looking at that list and thinking that that was a good list to incorporate.
Those are the chapters that we discussed, yes.
I don't recall, I don't think the committee looked at restrictions on chewing tobacco. I, I'm not aware of what those restrictions are.
I don't know what the restrictions are.
Keep this through the chair, so we don't have back-and-forth discussion. Thank you. Counselor LaForest, if you have something to add to that, that's fine. If not, that's okay, too. Are there other counselors wanting to add in? So, right now, we are still on the amendment, amendment of this proposal, so. Yes, Counselor Lamb?
Well, another big reason why I'm, I feel like, even though we may not have, we did actually briefly discuss chew in our public safety meeting. It didn't go, we, you know, didn't go down that path very far, but I would also note that this is coming from the police director in terms of a recommendation, and so, for me, that does carry a certain level of validation of what they're asking, since they will be the enforcement body, as we saw in the ordinance we just, you know, voted on a second ago. So, going in that direction of including things like chew, to me, feels appropriate in that sense.
Counselor Buddington.
I dislike long lists, and I like simplicity, and I, I think that this, this ordinance will already cover consumption in any public place. And I, I think the addition of smoking tobacco, or areas where smoking tobacco is prohibited, I think had the main advantage of covering inside vehicles on public roads. But for the most part, I feel as though prohibiting marijuana consumption in any public place is, is properly broad and really covers the vast majority of cases that, that we care about.
So, again, we are still, have a motion on this amendment. Any other discussion on the, the amendment? Any, yes, Counselor Lamb?
So, I should just clarify that the amendment that I suggested was just to change it to consumption, so I just, I'm, I'm willing to rescind that and change that amendment if it makes sense to do that.
Would that be easier?
I mean, we can amend an amendment. We did that plenty last meeting. Yes, we did, and we saw how, yeah. Yeah. We know where that goes.
But if you rescind this one, you're just gonna bring forward.
A different.
Amendment that's slightly different.
So, yeah. So, I will actually rescind the initial amendment.
Okay.
You said.
I will rescind my second.
Yeah, I'm actually looking at Counselor Harpen, because she actually had the initial language that.
I initially said, we're smoking, chewing, and consumption, or those three words in there somehow. Probably put consumption first, because that seemed to be the one that the police director liked that word, so we'll use consumption, smoking, or chewing tobacco.
I think I have a different text in front of us.
You need to, could you please read the entire amendment, what you want it to be?
So, okay, so.
First of all, are you replacing the entire?
The whole thing, yeah, so, that, that's what, that's what we're working on.
How you want it to read?
Okay, so I will read the full ordinance as we amended. So, Chapter 14, Section 14-3.2, this is a motion to amend, a motion to amend, Chapter 14, Section 14-3.2, Public Consumption of Marijuana and Marijuana Products, A, no public consumption. In accordance with General Law, Chapter 94G, Section 13C, no person shall smoke, ingest, or otherwise use or consume marijuana or marijuana products as defined in General Laws, Chapter 94G, Section 1, while on, in, or upon any public way, public place to which the public has access, where consumption, chewing, and smoking tobacco is prohibited.
Wait a minute, hold on.
That's the change.
So, first of all, you had, public place to which the public has a right of access. Okay, you didn't read that.
Yeah, sorry.
So, now, where are you going now from there?
So, that next, between the next two commas, it's where consumption, chewing, or smoking of tobacco is prohibited. Or private lands without the consent of the owner or person in control thereof.
Okay, got it.
So, my motion was to amend to that.
So, we need a second to that amendment.
Second.
Okay, so, from Hopkins. And any discussion? Yes, Counselor Cohen and Counselor LaForest.
So, I guess I just, I'm feeling a little redundancy going on here. The director of police, you know, I think that his, his addition of where tobacco consumption is prohibited kind of covers chewing, I mean, when I think of chewing, I think of consuming. Smoking, I think of consuming as well. I just don't want to get too wordy, and, and just the tobacco part. I mean, if there's any clarification as to the difference between chewing and consuming, I mean, please let me know, but I just feel like that's kind of redundant.
I think, I'm sorry, consumable products are gonna be more readily available now, so they have the candy and the brownies and, you know, all that kind of stuff. I, I would consider a consumable product, not a chewing tobacco.
Counselor LaForest and Counselor Lamb?
We're, we're getting quagmired again, and I'm not sure why we, we need multiple words to say what the word "consumption" addressed. And I guess, now, without being flippant, we've forgotten brownies and gummies and all of the edibles. Is their consumption not related to tobacco, but allowed on the public ways?
Counselor Lamb, then Counselor Buddington.
So, in terms of not listing the things, we do list it for marijuana, so we say "smoke, ingest, or otherwise use or consume." You know, I just feel like if we only include smoking tobacco, and we're including that for all the marijuana products, it's, we're missing something there. And I just want to make sure that we're, you know, maybe chewing isn't considered consumption, but I would consider it.
I would. I mean, I, I'm thinking that the.
Counselor Buddington was next, right?
Yes.
Sorry. Yeah, go ahead.
I feel like, as though the language that the committee came back with before any amendments covered all of the places we want to prohibit it, and if we're going to change the language to include other situations, I'd like some examples of what those are that weren't covered.
Counselor Cohen?
I, I, my, my recommendation is that we take out smoking and include consumption only to cover.
So, right now, the amendment proposed by Counselor Lamb is where consumption, chewing, or smoking tobacco is prohibited. You, are you ma- You, are you ma, are you making an amendment to that by wanting to remove chewing or smoking, and just so it says where, where consumption of tobacco is prohibited, is that what you're saying?
Making an amendment to support what the Director of Police Services has suggested, yes.
We need a second to that. So the second would be to-
Second.
Okay. So, this is pretty much getting like last meeting. So we have now- Last meeting was worse. So again, currently, we have an amendment to the amendment, which is changing from where consumption, chewing, or smoking tobacco is prohibited to just where consumption of tobacco is prohibited. Is that correct, Counselor Cohen?
Where tobacco consumption is prohibited, correct.
So it's in discussion at this point on that. Yes, Counselor Bunnington.
I'll, I'll reiterate, I think it, there would be a big difference depending on whether that's interpreted as where any consumption is prohibited, or where all consumption is prohibited. I think, I think that, that would, if we don't put either of those words in, I think it's ambiguous. I'm not offering an amendment, though.
And we can discuss this, and we can discuss this and go, you know, pass or fail, and then we go back to the original? Yes, Counselor Cohen.
And in the, in the verbiage, it does say, "or upon any." Does, does "any" in front of "public way" follow all the, after the commas? Because if that's the case, then "any" is already in the verbiage. Or is it "for, only, and, or upon any public way"? While "on, in, or upon any," public way, public place, public right of access, so does "any" follow the rest of the sentence? Because then it's already there for, it covers the "all" or "any," correct?
Counselor La Forest.
I don't know if I should make jokes about diagramming, or Venn diagrams, or how we want to parse this out, but I feel like we're getting lost and should probably vote on the amendment. So I'm going-
So, well, right now, we do have Counselor Cohen's amendment, which was seconded. So we can go ahead and do a vote on that, so... I guess I should do roll call, because it's probably gonna be split. The First Amendment at this point, the First Amendment at this point, it's, we're amending an amendment-
It's waiting, it's sitting in the wings while we're dealing with this.
Right now, we, we need to get this one done. So again, the, the motion that's currently proposed by Counselor Cohen is taking out chewing or smoking, and just having it where tobacco, where consumption of tobacco is prohibited. Roll call. Hold on. Well, we're still gonna continue discussion on this after this amendment, so, okay, yes. Roll call.
Bunnington?
No.
Cohen?
Yes.
Harpen?
No.
Hopkins?
No.
Lamb?
No.
La Forest?
Yes.
Wilkinson?
Yes.
Bona?
No.
Motion fails.
Motion carries?
Fails.
Oh, fails, okay. So we're back now to the original amendment presented by Counselor Lamb. Well, not the original, originally.
I'm wondering what all the stoned people at home are thinking about this.
Mr. Carter Mino, did you want to speak at this time? Okay, please get up. It'll be refreshing.
You know, I see a lot of, to do about nothing. Because once you pass an ordinance, and then down the road, you've skipped a beat somewhere, you simply bring it back to council and close that. That's why you have lawyers that are always looking for loopholes. That's so simple that it doesn't make any sense to keep beating this thing to death. And as this thing progresses, you're gonna find out that you didn't cover all the bases. And that's when you're gonna have to close them. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. So we're back to the council, and we're back to the amendment, which is where consumption, chewing, or smoking tobacco is prohibited. And we have, ready for a vote on this? This will be a roll call vote also. This is for the original amendment.
With Bunnington?
No.
Cohen?
I'm sorry, I need, I need clarification.
With the language of that Counselor Harpen.
Counselor Harpen, okay, no.
No.
I think we need, we definitely need-
This needs to be read, I-
Yeah, I'm sorry.
All right, so the, we're, we're replacing what was originally given to us with, I hope I got this right. In accordance with general laws, chapter 94G, section 13C, no person shall smoke, ingest, or otherwise use or consume marijuana or marijuana products as defined in general laws, chapter 94G, section 1, while on, in, or upon any public way, public place to which the public has a right of access, where consumption, chewing, or smoking of tobacco is prohibited, or private lands without the consent of the owner or person in control thereof. So that is the amendment, and that amendment is replacing the whole paragraph that we were originally given. Okay? So, we are doing a roll call on that amendment. And then, if the amendment passes, we will do a vote on the actual ordinance.
Bunnington?
No.
Cohen?
No.
Harpen?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
La Forest?
No.
Wilkinson?
No.
Bona?
Yes.
A tie on that amendment.
So it would fail, because it needs majority.
Yeah, it needs majority, yeah.
So that fails. Since you're making this easy tonight. So that brings us back to the original ordinance that is in front of us. Yes, Counselor Lamb.
To clarify, by "original," you mean the one that the mayor actually presented to us originally?
Correct.
Just, okay.
Yes. So we've had two amendments fail, which, again, is the original. Do we have any other amendments, or, you know, and we can also send this back to public safety, I'm just throwing that out there, so... Yes, Counselor Bunnington.
So just to be clear again, sorry for the redundancy, but we are now looking at the ordinance as presented by the mayor at a previous meeting. In that case, I would like to move that we adopt, that we replace that with the language brought back by the Public Safety Committee.
Second.
Okay.
What was your motion?
My motion is to replace the text of this ordinance with the language proposed by the Public Safety Committee.
And I second that, without all the purple hair there. Sorry. Could you read that, please?
Do you have that paragraph?
I can read it as it-
Sure, go ahead.
So as it was received, "In accordance with general law, chapter 94G, section 13C, no person shall smoke, ingest, or otherwise use or consume marijuana or marijuana products as defined in general laws, chapter 94G, section 1, while on, in, or upon any public way, public place to which the public has a right of access, where smoking tobacco is prohibited, or private lands without the consent of the owner or person in control thereof."
Okay. Can, ready to do a roll call on this one? Yes, Counselor Lamb.
I do just want to acknowledge that this does not take into account any of the language that the Director of, that Director Casaleo provided us. It eliminates that, so that's-
Roll call.
Bunnington?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Harpen?
No.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Lamb?
No.
La Forest?
No.
Wilkinson?
No.
A Bona?
Do I count? Uh, yes.
Okay, motion fails, it's a tie.
So at this point, we still do not have a, an ordinance-
I'd like to make a motion, that we add the police director's recommendation back into the ordinance.
And I second that. I assumed we were going to amend the amendment to get back to where we were originally. So I second Counselor Wilkinson's motion.
All right, so... The motion is to go back to the original recommendation-
But add, but add the police commissioner's recommendation.
Yeah.
So removing where smoking tobacco is prohibited, and inserting where tobacco consumption is prohibited.
Correct.
Didn't we just vote on that?
Three times.
Not exactly.
Not exactly.
Did you get that one? So it's changing from where consumption... What's that line again, Counselor La Forest? Oh, read the whole thing? Okay, read the whole thing. Who made the motion?
I did.
Do you have that to read?
I do not.
Okay. Go ahead, Counselor La Forest.
In accordance with general laws, chapter 94G, section 13C, no person shall smoke, ingest, or otherwise use or consume marijuana or marijuana products as defined in general laws, chapter 94G, section 1, while on, in, or upon public, any public way, public place to which the public has a right of access, where tobacco consumption is prohibited, or private lands without the consent of the owner or person in control thereof.
Sorry, here, just where tobacco consumption is prohibited. Not a whole lot different. Is that even different? Go ahead, Counselor Wilkinson.
And the reason I did that, I think it's very important that if a police commissioner makes a recommendation, he, this is the person that has the knowledge, is on the street, is, he's making a recommendation, and I don't, and I, I know this has all been very confusing tonight, we've gone back and forth and put in this word, taken out this word. The original ordinance is written, was pretty good, and now we have the police commissioner asking for one little change, and I think we should acknowledge that.
Counselor La Forest.
And I just want to read from Director Casaleo's communication. He wrote, I, writes, I, wrote, he writes, "I know it may sound insignificant, however, as we all know, there are other ways of using tobacco, chewing, spitting, eating, vaping with nicotine or its directives. I have specifically dealt with this type of detail-splitting issue." And so I-
So I just wanna make it clear that we had where consumption of tobacco is prohibited. That failed. Now we are doing where tobacco consumption is prohibited. So we just took the word "consumption" and moved it on the other side of "prohibited." That's the only change we did, so I just wanna, let you know, we're really getting to semantics here. I'm not sure if it's making any difference. So we currently have that motion on the floor, is, was Counselor Wilkinson's motion seconded?
I seconded it.
So yes, Counselor Lamb.
I also just want to mention that the solicitor will be reviewing this and getting us a written comment before the next meeting. So we still have, if, if there is some reason that folks still have questions on this, which I doubt there will be, but if there is, that will be able to be discussed then.
Counselor Bunnington.
I'll risk being repetitive and just say, this still doesn't, for me, change any, at any places where use of marijuana is prohibited, it doesn't, as far as I can tell, change anything in practice, but I think it makes it harder to interpret the ordinance, because smoking tobacco is so well-defined in state law, and tobacco consumption, I'm, I'm not aware of the difference.
Roll call vote, please. Again, so currently, it is, the one line we changed is where tobacco consumption is prohibited. That's what we're currently voting on.
Bunnington?
No.
Cohen?
Yes.
Harpen?
No.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Forest?
Yes.
Wilkinson?
Yes.
Bona?
Yes.
So it doesn't fail, just kidding.
What's that? Okay, the amendment passes. Okay. So now we are back to the actual, the ordinance, which we just pretty much read. And we'll need a, the motion is still on the table for that, so we need a roll call.
We haven't made that motion yet?
No.
To publish?
The main motion has been on the table.
Oh, to pass as amended, okay, so now we need a, but wasn't the original motion-
Original motion is to pass to a second reading and publish. You did all the amendments on it, now you need a motion to pass to a second reading and publish as amended.
Okay. Motion to pass to a second reading as amended, and publish as required by law.
So moved.
Second.
So now we're voting on the actual ordinance.
No, you don't vote on it, you don't-
Oh, sorry, to the-
No, it's already become second reading.
Second reading. Just, just an all in favor? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Paper number 11,646, 1A, Mayor's Communication, 15A, recommending proposed recreational marijuana sales. Without objection, file the communication. Mayor.
Thank you. This is, this is coming back from the last meeting, subject to changes in the final regulations from the CCC. So the, the question had come up, the original regulations is promulgated, talked about a 2% sales tax, the final regulations allowed a 3% sales tax. So the order as put forward is the correct language for the local option. And I would recommend its adoption.
Paper number 11,646, 1A, An Order Accepting MGLA Chapter 64N, Section 3, Adopting a 3% Sales Tax Applicable to Marijuana Retailers. Motion to adopt the order. Moved. Second. Who was that?
Lamb.
Oh, okay, and Hopkins. Discussion from council. Yes, Counselor Lamb.
I'm wondering if it might make sense to read the full order itself into the record, just... I, I can do that, or you can do it?
Yeah, you can go right ahead.
Ordered that in accordance with the, in accordance with Commonwealth of Massachusetts Acts of 2017, chapter 55, section 13, and pursuant to Massachusetts General Laws, chapter 64N, section 3, the City of North Adams hereby adopts a 3% gross sales tax applicable to marijuana retailers. The marijuana retailer shall pay the local ta, or local sales tax to the commissioner at the ti, at the same time and in the same manner as the sales tax due to the Commonwealth.
Okay, any discussion from counselors? Yes, Counselor La Forest.
I just want to make expressly clear that this is consistent with most of the communities across the Commonwealth, and that North Adams is not levying a tax against retail marijuana sales on its own, or, you know, ad lib. It's, this is consistent, this is not a new creation of the City of North Adams.
Discussion from the public? Not hearing any discussion, this is a roll call vote.
Bunnington?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Harpen?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
La Forest?
Yes.
Wilkinson?
Yes.
Bona?
Yes.
Motion carries. Paper number 11,569-1, Mayor's Communication, number 16, Regarding Ashland Street Property Taken by Eminent Domain, Without Objection, File the Communication. Mayor.
Thank you. I will, I will briefly summarize the information in the communication. It's two points with related relation to the City Yard property. The first is a matter of procedure, that under the terms of the purchase and sale between the city and Cumberland Farms, the, the company had the option at will to request a six-day extension to the feasibility study period regarding environmental investigation, which extended until March 10th. Earlier in the month of March, Cumberland Farms, acting through their legal counsel and the city solicitor, requested and I granted a further extension of the feasibility study period until April 9th, in order for Cumberland Farms to complete its environmental investigation. I will pause there and just offer that this is related to the fact that we live in New England, that it is winter, that we have had a tremendous amount of snow on the ground, and the ability of the company to finalize their, their environmental impact study was hampered by the, by the weather. We're not anticipating any, any surprises, but that's, this is just a procedural matter. The more significant matter, and I will shortly turn over to the, to the solicitor, is that there's a matter of title clearance that has surfaced relative to the sale. The City Yard property consists of two lots designated on the assessor's maps as map 171, lots four and five. During the study period, neither the city nor the title examiner for- During the study period, neither the city nor the title examiner for Cumberland Farms could establish a clear title to the Lot 4 parcel. This is a piece of property that the city has openly, exclusively, and continuously occupied and used as its public works facility for a period of more than 50 years. In fact, it would be substantially greater than that, but that's the, the period that we're using as a, as a benchmark. In order to complete the sale, the solicitor has recommended and prepared an order authorizing the council, authorizing the city, I'm sorry, to take both lots by eminent domain as allowed by law, effectively redrawing the, the boundary of the parcel for, for Cumberland Farms to acquire. The solicitor is here to respond to any questions, but I would recommend the adoption of this taking by eminent domain in order to facilitate the sale to Cumberland Farms.
Questions? Yes, Counsel Bundington.
I, I fail to find justification that this is a standard or acceptable use of eminent domain, because we're not taking it, well, we're not really taking it from anybody, and we're not taking it for a public purpose that I can identify.
Counsel Lamb.
I actually, the city solicitor might be able to answer this better, but I do believe that city purpose would actually be the sale of the property. Right, so, but maybe I'll wait until the actual order itself to ask questions directly related, or should I ask now with the communication?
You can ask now, sure.
So my big question, because obviously this came before council last year for the actual RFP that went out?
Yes.
Did we not know that these were issues when we received those RFPs?
No, you would not have known. Where this surfaced was, as we prepared the draft deed and to send off to Cumberland Farms, we did a, a title search and began looking in the registry of deeds. There's no source deed to the property. It's a little unusual, but given the long-term that the city's occupied the property, that's really the only, the only reason. There's not really here a question of who owns it. It's quite clear the city does, the city's occupied it, there's no adverse claims on the property, there's no interested parties in the properties that have come forward or that anyone could identify. There is a process in the law, in case law, which is called a confirmatory taking. This is what I would term this. Certainly, there is a public purpose, if nothing else, there's a public purpose to clear title to your own land, so that it becomes marketable. The order that you have before you is an order that we drafted here, but that has been agreed upon with the title insurer for Cumberland Farms. So that simply puts on record with reference to a plan which Cumberland Farms had surveyed and assumed the cost of that survey, and it's the way to clear title and to pass title. It's a bit unusual in the sense that you don't see it all the time, but there are instances throughout the Commonwealth of confirmatory eminent domain taking, simply to confirm title. Interestingly, on the other lot, back in the 70s, in Lot 5, there was a, a sale of the property, but if you go back into the registry of deeds, you'll also see a taking of that property, which was done a friendly taking, many times done to satisfy any outstanding issues of title, and it's really procedural and really not a substantive issue that you're taking anybody's property.
Thank you. To this solicitor. I believe it's probably about a decade ago that there was a law change where, again, communities could take property by eminent domain and actually resell it to developers. Is, is that?
That's entirely different.
Right, but I'm just, I know that's different than that, but...
It's a case that arose in, I believe, Baltimore, Maryland.
Right.
Supreme Court said that you could really, for the sake of development, kind of switch from one owner to the other. It's not at all what we're doing here.
Right, no, I know that's not what's done here, but that was, to answer Counsel Bundington's question, that, that is allowed, even though it's not specific here, and I do think the city used it once to buy some property for the Clark Biscuit Building. That was eminent domain, but we'll get back to point here. Any other questions from counselors on the eminent domain? Yes, Counsel Bundington.
May, may through the chair to the solicitor. Where else did we look for previous owners besides the registry of deeds?
Well, there's no record in the assessor's office either of, of any source deed, it's simply stated, so that you would not find any other deed other than in the registry of deeds. There's a deed in, in someplace at the owner, would be at the city hall, but the assessor has done that due diligence, and there is no deed.
As Counsel Bundington.
I was hoping that maybe there'd been some historical, I mean, like through the Historical Society, that may be out of the jurisdiction. But the other question I have, if I, again, through the chair to the solicitor, why is, if Lot 5 does have clear title, why are we taking that by eminent domain as well?
Simply to put it in one parcel, which was something we discussed with the title insurer for the buyer, it establishes the clear bounds as, as defined by the survey. So you're taking nothing more, you're simply confirming what you already have. You're not changing a boundary, you're simply taking what's there and correcting the title. Now, if it weren't a city, if it was simply an individual needed to correct their title, it'd be a land court procedure. So the city has certain benefits, and one of the mechanisms it has and tools it has, which we're using here, is the confirmatory eminent domain taking process.
Thank you. Any other questions from counselors? We are actually, we're, yeah, we're on the...
The other question?
Yes, Counsel.
Yeah, just a quote question through the chair to the solicitor. So is this going to be published in the paper for people to read, or this is it? So the public will have no prior knowledge to this to say that used to be my land, or...
It's on your agenda, it was on this agenda. It's not a question of anyone within ownership interests. There's ample empirical evidence of, of occupation and ownership, so it's not, it's not really that issue that, that we see at least. So the answer to your question is, no, there's no need for a publication in this instance.
And again, keep in mind, we are still on the communication.
I know, and that's why I wasn't sure if I should have started the question bandwagon. The mayor sort of alluded to this, you know, we're using the 50-year mark as sort of the, the point in time. Do we have a actual closer estimate to how many years?
Well, I think, I mean, my own estimate in talking with folks is, it's probably over 100 years that the city's occupied that property. So I think it's, the, the reason to use a number was simply to put something on the record that would be without question.
Thank you.
The other counselors? We're going to move on to the actual paper. Paper number 11,569-1, an order authorizing the mayor to take by eminent domain property located on Ashland Street under the provisions, MGL Chapter 40, Section 14, and MGL Chapter 79. Need a motion to adopt the order. So moved. Second. No, was I, was I wrong again?
Yes.
No, they need to speak up.
And so we got a second, and discussion from counsel, again, if any other discussion. Not hearing any, any discussion from the public. Not hearing any, this is a roll call vote.
Bundington?
No.
Cohen?
Yes.
Harpen?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
La Forest?
Yes.
Wilkinson?
Yes.
Bona?
Yes.
Paper number 11,567-1, Mayor's Communication, number 17, authorizing the superintendent to submit a statement of interest for Graylock School to Massachusetts School Building Authority. Without objection, file the communication. Mayor.
Thank you. I will, I will summarize, this is a, a process that members who have been on the council before will be familiar with, but for, for new counselors and for myself, I will lay out the specifics. In order to get into the, the hopper for consideration of funding through MSBA for school renovations, we must first submit a statement of interest, and that is a two-part, a two-part process from the city standpoint. It must be authorized, the submission must be authorized by the school committee, which happened at the March 6th meeting of this year, and then further endorsed by the council prior to the April 6th submission, submission deadline to MSBA. So what I, what I will note, which is in the communication, is submitting the SOI secures the city and school districts eligibility to pursue MSBA funding. However, per MSBA guidelines, the city's SOI submission must be accompanied by authorization from both the school committee and the city council. The form and phrasing of the authorization follow the recommendations provided by MSBA, and that would be the, the attached order, I'm sorry, resolution. A couple of administrative points to note, submitting the SOI creates no obligation for the city, nor does it obligate MSB, MSBA to accept or approve the application, the awarding of a grant, or any other funding commitment from the state, nor does it commit the public schools to filing an application for funding with the MSBA in the future. This step simply establishes the city's place in the priority list of projects and puts us in line for future funding consideration. So the superintendent is here to address any questions relative to the, to the SOI, and I would request approval of the accompanying resolution.
Let's see, we have paper number 11,567-1, a resolution authorizing the superintendent to submit a statement of interest for Graylock School. Need a motion to adopt the resolution. So moved. Second. Wilkinson and Hopkins. Discussion. Yes, Counsel Wilkinson.
It's a no-brainer.
Yes.
Simple as that.
Anyone from the public? Any other discussion? Not hearing any. We have a motion to adopt, this is a roll call vote.
Bundington?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Harpen?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Here, uh, yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
La Forest?
Yes.
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 Did you leave us for a little bit?
At least we know you're back, yep.
Back at that whole marijuana ordinance, I just took a break. All right. Paper number 11,653, Mayor's Communication, number 18, presenting the draft budget for FY '19. Need a motion to refer to the finance committee. So moved.
Second.
And Mayor.
With the, with the motion, I will, I will just say, we have a draft budget. And I look forward to working with the, the finance committee of the, of the council and my finance team to bring this forward. As you, as you know, having it in a draft format provides us the opportunity for discussion and engagement, where if we were presenting a, a budget, the only latitude and recourse the council would have is to, is to cut. As a draft budget, we have the, the ability to, to work together collaboratively, and as noted in the, the communication that accompanied the budget circulation to the council, there are a couple of places where we, we know that there are some, I'm calling them structural gaps that we, we need to close, and rather than bring those, bring those forward with a level budget, we put those in a, in a form that the, the committee and the public have a chance to have some dialogue around, around those options, and, you know, to hear some suggestions from the council, and, and to share the ways that, that my team is, is prepared to, to bring those forward.
Yes, Counsel Lamb.
Just as a, a note for the public as well, just on the dates of the, the planned meetings. So there's three meetings planned, April 11th, which is a Wednesday, April 18th, which is a Wednesday, and April 25th, which is also a Wednesday. So for folks from the public, I don't know what camera to look at, you know, please do come to those meetings and ask questions, because it's important to have as much input as possible. And then likely another meeting in May, which the date has yet to be set.
Other questions from counselors? Definitely recommend as many of you as possible making those meetings, it makes the future meetings much easier. Anyone from the public? Yes. This is specifically on the draft budget, forwarding it to public, or to finance committee.
David Whitney, 51 Burnham Street. Seems the past, I don't know, two or three years, the budget goes through the whole process, it gets passed and accepted, and then the first week of August, the previous mayor would come up, but we need a new street sweeper, we need a new wire, truck like that. Now, this stuff just doesn't happen, which leads to the question, are the budgets being padded? Because all of a sudden, we gotta get, we, we gotta okay this. And the street sweeper just didn't break overnight. You know, transparency, you wonder what's going on. How, how much of the budget is padded? Where does the money, where, where did that money come from? That's just my question. I hope people, you know, trans, transparency, I've seen enough of that. Thank you.
I can know for myself from past budgets, and one that has happened is sometimes additional money comes in from the state, it's not always predictable what, what we might get, and a lot of that money comes in, in the fall, and so that's some of the reasons. Or there's, the mayor finds a saving somewhere else and we, you know, spend it, but... Any other, oh, yes, Counsel La Forest.
So I had my hand half up before, but not all the way up, so...
Don't call on you unless it's all the way up.
Okay, sorry. So just a question, I realize this is a draft budget, the structural deficit that, through the chair, I apologize, the structural, to the mayor, the structural deficit that you indicate in your communication, is that reflective of full expected funding from the state? Because I know in the, the governor's drafts, there is underfunding on multiple levels, and that was actually a question I had and for counselors' concerns. Does that reflect full funding from the state? Does it reflect underfunding in the draft budget? Where's, or is that just a, a fact of accounting?
So two clarifications, I'm very intentional about using the word gap and not the word deficit, because we, we don't have a...
Okay.
We don't have a deficit. We, again, we have a, we have ways to close the gap that we're, we're including, so I don't, I don't want to give the wrong impression around the deficit, the question.
I apologize, yeah.
The second point is, we're using the, the numbers that the governor promulgated in the H2 budget, so...
Okay.
Those are, you know, underfunded based on, you know, based on the, the best opinions we've heard. So we will continue to work on this as the budget moves into the, into the House, the Senate, the conference committee, which is one of the reasons that as you look at the budget timeline, we're still going into, into June to get to this, is we know, one, one reason is that to have that fourth meeting, I want to, we want to have the school budget better settled, so we can bring that forward in a, in a solid form, but the other reason is to let the state budget process play itself out, so that if there are any variations in, in school or, or general state aid, we can capture those in the budget.
Thank you.
Any other questions from counselors? Anyone from the public? This is a motion to refer to the finance committee. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes. Paper number 11,654, Communication from Counsel Bundington regarding a plastic bag and styrofoam ban. Need a motion to refer to general government. So moved. Second. Second. Forest and Bundington?
Lamb.
You looked right at me.
What makes you think I'm involved?
Discussion.
Puzzler.
If I may briefly summarize, this has actually been on, informally on, on my list, and I think other people's lists, for more than a year now. Finally getting to it, because we got a very nice email from this stunning Sheehan tonight? Who, who has been doing some, some cleanup on West Shaft Road and finds a lot of plastic bag litter. And I think 60-some-odd other towns in, in Massachusetts have adopted similar bans, that there is precedent. Clearly, it's more of a, more of a discussion than we want to have here tonight, so I'd be very happy to take this up in committee.
Yes, Counsel Cohen.
I don't, I don't think this is new news, just in general of the community. I mean, we're looking at trying to be more sustainable and, and be more responsible, socially responsible, so I think it's Stockbridge that made the town health department responsible for making sure that it was happening. You know, there's, there's measures already in place that we can kind of mimic as well, so sending this to general government would be the best.
Counsel Bundington.
I'd like to suggest a, a date of return, of April 24th.
Discussion, yes.
Robert Cardamino.
Robert Cardamino, 173 East Quincy Street. I'm going to present an opinion, and I'm going to present some information. So, please. Well, isn't there a rule of saying, if you're going to pass some information, you can have a little extra time? It'd probably be five seconds or less.
Okay, we'll see how close. We'll see how close, but also, it'd be great if you could go to the committee meeting, too, so.
Thank you. Just when this city's beginning to show some momentum, Councilor Buddington comes up with an ordinance to ban plastic bags. This ban is anti-business. It causes prices to rise in stores, and it also causes a bigger burden on shoppers and the elderly. With a change in leadership from the mayor's office, we are beginning to see some positive things happening for the first time in eight years. And with the faith in the new councilors, and the friendliness from this council, we should be moving things forward. But an ordinance only angers people in this city, because there's a lot of people that are against North Adams, I want to say, is the third poorest community in the state. Do you realize that? You probably didn't. And this ordinance is only going to push us down further by putting a burden on businesses.
You got to wrap it up, Mr. Cardamino.
It's like pulling a quill out of a porcupine and saying it's a house pet. The positive things that are beginning to happen together, like Eagle Street, and the things that are going to happen in Knoll Field. And I would also like to point out some information.
State of the point of the plastic bags. Just state of the point of the plastic bags.
Well, you know, this has to do with...
All right, I got it here.
Economic development also.
Yeah, but you can bring, you can continue this in open forum, please. Okay? Continue in open forum. I gave you well more than two minutes. Okay? Thank you.
But we got to take a lesson from, a lesson from...
Mr. Cardamino, please. Last sentence here.
Framingham. Look up Framingham, what's happened down there.
Thank you. Name and address for the record, please.
Hi, Barbara May, 119 Summit Avenue, North Adams. I like to think I represent a lot of people that think single-use plastic is a nightmare for the environment, makes no sense. I'm all for banning single-use plastic bags, and styrofoam particularly. I think it needs to stop as soon as possible. I think it would be a great benefit to the city to take this up. There are many alternatives that are far better. And this is a little off-topic, but if you use two-sided printing, you'd be using half as much paper.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Any other, yes. Name and address for the record, please.
Yes, Brian Sapienza, 113 Pleasant Street. I just want to point out the economic burden of having, banning plastic bags. I hate the things. I think they're terrible. I think we should go back to paper. But the problem is, we have a couple of big-box stores in this city that would probably end up costing us more in the long run, through our groceries, through our general merchandise purchases, things like that. As far as the styrofoam for food packaging, like from McDonald's or Dunkin' Donuts, things like that, I think we should go to paper. But the burden of having, placing this on this, I can see in the 61 cities and towns, are they major cities where they have a lot of big-box stores which use a lot of plastic, or are they boutique stores, like in towns like Stockbridge or Lenox, that have smaller businesses where the economy of using a paper bag or another alternative actually works out better for them than it would be a major store, say Big Y, or one of the other larger concerns?
Thank you. Yes. Name and address for the record, please.
Henry Eske, 62 Chase Ave. Here some years ago, we went down the road. We put big stuff in paper bags, and we, grocery stores, and we ripped the bags off. That don't make it look good. We went to plastic. We can shove more stuff in there. We also can break the bags open, or break the bags, too. It's a halfway meter. Now, you have to look at, if you don't want plastic, you don't want styrofoam, you want these bags to be somewhat plastic, but they're colorful bags. Okay? They're not just everyday plastic bags, where I'll sell corn, or I'll sell grocery stores, or I'll sell this. It's colorful. You have the paper bag, it can also rip, but it's also colorful. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Again, this is just referring it to general government. Any other discussion? Not hearing any other. All in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Motion passes. We have, are we on to licenses? Is that right?
No, Community Calendar.
Oh, sorry. Yep. Community Calendar. Do we have any councilors or public with any events? Not hearing any. We will move on to open forum. Anyone in open forum wish to speak? Yes. Go ahead.
Yes, Brian Sapienza, 113 Pleasant Street. This is in reference to the restoration of the artwork beneath the Route 2 overpass on Marshall Street. I've been seeing a lot of things on social media lately about members of our, citizens of our city wanting the artwork restored. And just a couple of points. The artwork on those pillars was created by our local school children, and many local residents, including myself, are upset that the work was destroyed by an action of mass moka. The artwork was destroyed in the face by painting over it with plain gray paint. Even though mass moka is a major economic player in the local economy, what really gives them the right to do this, and it's kind of an insult to those of us who have children or know of children that have actually created this artwork. Personally, in reference, my nephew was one of the children that had painted it, and he was very proud of the work, and he always managed to point it out to me every time we drove onto the overpass together. And I just wanted to make that point. Last point I got to make is, the previous council and administration kind of trivialized this issue, didn't give it much thought, nor did they put much effort into the restoration process. I am basically here asking the council and mayor to take some action, and let's begin restoring the artwork to the pillars. If it is too late to restore the original artwork because of the paint that's been put on there, maybe there should be a coordinated effort by our city, public schools or what have you, to have a new generation of children put new artwork onto the pillars. And, again, you may consider this a trivial matter, and I think there's other issues that are more important right now, but I think that there's a lot of residents that would like to see this restored, and the sooner the better. Thank you.
Anyone else in open forum? Yes. Mr. Cardamino. Yes.
Really prepared to speak about this, but in defense of mass moka...
To the microphone, please. They can't hear you. We can hear you, they can't hear you at home, so.
Okay. 119 Summit Avenue. My understanding, and I could be wrong, anyone can tell me that, those pillars were painted in a way that was misunderstood mass moka's original sound installation, of which the pillars were a part of a visual aspect of that. And through some misunderstanding, the city allowed the pillars to be painted, which were beautiful artworks that should have been painted somewhere else. So, if the city could find somewhere else for the local people to do the exact same thing, but in a different place, I think that'd be great.
Point of information, this can also be brought up at the Art Commission, which has discussed this in the past. Thank you.
Robert Cardamino, 173 East Quincy Street. And I'd like to continue on this. You know, I'd like to point out that the city of Framingham was once the biggest town in Massachusetts. And what happened was, two new businesses started there. One was with bicycles, and the other one was a brewery. And they created lots of jobs, and the town grew to over 12,000. And when that happened, 12,000 is the cutoff point, when you become a town, and then you have to become a city. So, they changed the charter and became a city. And also, there was three doctors that started a pharmaceuticals, and are advertising on national television, which also grew. And there's more and more companies that are moving out of Boston into Framingham. And we could take a lesson from that. We could also do that in North Adams, because there's opportunities. We have, but it takes some effort. And if you still insist on banning plastic bags, counselor, bring it to a vote, and see if the public really wants it. Just deciding for the whole city, because you want something, and you want to thump your chest, these are the kind of things, like Pollinator City.
Okay. Mr. Cardamino, your two minutes are...
And it makes no sense.
Thank you. Thank you.
And if you're going to...
Mr. Cardamino, please. Thank you. Any other one in open forum? Not hearing any. We'll move on to mayor's concerns.
Thank you. At the risk of belaboring a topic that we've spent a lot of time with, I do want to just close out with a couple of thoughts on the ordinance that was passed this evening. It was an imperfect, it was, as Counselor Wilkinson noted, a confusing process. I would, however, submit that it also was an exemplary process that we followed throughout the city, and that is a credit to the work of the staff in community development, most notably Larissa Bernstein, to the members of the working group, to the council, and to the members of the community who participated in this. Again, I thank everybody for their forbearance. I apologize for the confusion created by a state process that moved in a parallel, but slightly asynchronous track to the one that we were following. And so, we know we're going to have a process that requires amendments, but the process to getting there, I'm really proud of the work that we did as a community. I want to thank my finance team for their work on the first phase of the budget, and I do look forward, again, to working with the Finance Committee over the next few weeks and the next couple of months to bring forward a responsible budget for the city. I'm sorry that the solicitor left. I did want to acknowledge his retirement, as I communicated to you and as was announced in the media at the end of last week. He and I are working together to wind down a few matters, and I do want to thank him for his many years of service. I'll be coming forward with a formal version of this communication, but I do want to let the council know that I'll be appointing KP Law as the city's new council, which means that from a budget perspective, we'll be shifting our expenses from the salary to the legal services line. We will have two lead attorneys whom I've met with, and I have tremendous confidence in them. KP is well-regarded in the state. About a third of the municipalities and the Commonwealth work with them, including Williamstown and Clarksburg. This is a change, so it will involve some exploratory steps. They're a good team, but we're going to lose some of the local relationships we've had with the local solicitor going forward. But I know that we can backfill that with partners in the community. And I anticipate that as litigation issues come forward, Donovan and O'Connor would remain a resource to us. At the last meeting, President Bonner requested an update on the status of a few projects, and I'll just run through those really quickly, starting with some of the active agreements we have in place. We talked this evening about Cumberland Farms. The confirmatory taking that we did today gives, establishes a clear title. As noted, we've extended the environmental study to April 9th, and then after that, I anticipate we'll be ready to move forward and close out that sale. Windsor Mill, the purchase and sale was approved by this council in July of 2017, and there's an environmental study in process on that as well. And once the results of that are known, I would anticipate we would move with the purchaser toward closing a sale. Heritage Park and the Extreme Model Railroad Museum has a purchase option on the park. They have one, they have a one-year extension that they need to exercise by May 12th with an additional $30,000 deposit. I anticipate they will move forward. I had a meeting with them last week and got an update on the project, and they shared information on next steps, which suggests that they may soon be moving forward the entire project. Then there are four pending items that would involve reissuing RFPs. These were sales that were approved last year by the council. Their bids have gone out, and they were unsuccessful, so we're going to be reissuing those in the spring, once they've been updated. Last March, we went out with a RFP for Sullivan School. There were no bidders, so that's one that will just be reissued in the hope that someone will look to the school. The Ashland Street Salt Shed, the Public Works property over there, again, the RFP was issued last March. There was one bidder that was presented to council. The council chose not to accept the bid, so we will go out with that one as well. The Notre Dame Church and School, same story. Out last spring, no bidders. We'll reissue. And then, the land in Pownell that was issued at the end of November with a closing date in December, and there were no bidders, so we'll look to that as well. So, those are four projects that we will reissue. We'll do a push when those are ready to release. Typically, there's opportunities through the Office of Community Development for bidders to do serious inquiries. We'll wait till the weather's a little nicer, so if anyone wants to walk around any of these lands and see them for themselves, they have that option as part of the process. The final note I would offer is, I was off getting a cup of coffee this afternoon, and Bari at Bruhaha let me know that they are closing the Marshall Street location on Saturday, March 31st, in preparation for their move to the Ashland Street location. So, they expect it will take a couple of months, I'm sorry, West Main Street. Thank you, Mr. President. Their West Main Street location, they expect to open in a couple of months, once they've completed the move and the setup. And I just want to, you know, wish them and their team good luck as they launch into this new venture. It certainly will be a loss on Marshall Street for those of us who are downtown. Thank you.
We have liaison updates and councilors' concerns. Yes, Council Harpen?
This isn't really concern. It's more of a compliment. As you know, last council meeting was very long and very tough with the marijuana discussions that we had, and our city clerk was not here, and she was being substituted with the assistant city clerk, Debbie Pettersini, and I just want to thank her for filling in. It was a very tough meeting for her to get her feet wet, and she certainly did. So, I just want to say, good job, and thank her for her work.
The other councilors? Yes, Council La Forest?
I would second that, and if I may ask a question to the mayor through the chair?
You can propose a question. He does not have to respond.
Okay, so I'm...
As I did last week.
I'm just, okay. So, I'm just curious about potholes, and I know, God willing, it'll get a little warmer, and we'll be able to repair some of those. I know the Chapter 90 funding has been delayed in Boston, and I'm just curious if we're in a position to move forward repairing potholes in spite of that?
The crews are out doing repair. I know they're, we're at that temperature place where, you know, hot mix starts to be viable. They were doing it, I know that last week, their equipment was down for maintenance purposes, so that the crews are a little bit behind where they hoped to be. But now that the weather's hopefully turned, and that we've had, we've put together a couple of consecutive days of sun, I think we'll see those start to move. I know we had a couple of calls about potholes at Drury. I think that was yesterday, and they were up there taking care of a couple of those, those big ones up there.
The kids have been... The kids have been complaining about the ride up and down the hill a little bit.
Yeah.
But no, no delay because of the funding?
No.
Okay, great.
Any other councilors' concerns or liaison reports? Not hearing any? We will move on to licenses. We do have one license. And is, um, for RJ's Taxi, application for license to drive a taxi received from Emily Breen, uh, five forty-nine Church Street, North Adams. Uh, we need a motion to grant the license.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Counsel? Public? Yes?
Can I just have for clarification why this comes to council? Um, because, I mean, it doesn't have to come to council? Okay, so it's by law, so, um, do we have the authority to say no?
You do.
And so what is the process at that? Just so that I know, moving forward.
So, you can vote yes or no. Um, there have been ones in the past that have failed because the information on their application was either not incomplete. Usually, usually the application, by the time we get it, has gone through the Public Safety Department-
Right.
And they've approved it. Um, basically, it's just another step in the process. Part of the reason we approve it is we approve, uh, I believe, all licenses that go through the city clerk, other than dog licenses, but we approve propane, gasp, as those licenses. Um, and taxi licenses right now, at this time, still go through the city clerk's office, and we have to, it's in our, it's our ordinance, you know, so, uh, we do approve them.
Okay.
Uh, but yeah, you can, you can say no. Uh, we have changed it in the past, we did, used to require, um, the drivers to be here, and it was a case they'd sit through the whole meeting and-
Right.
Really for no reason, so, um, anyway. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion passes. And I don't think I saw any correspondence, and, um, motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?